Let me open a regular meeting of City Council, City of Pearland. For Monday, September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. At six thirty P M. We are using the telephonic and video conferencing because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we will continue that through the rest of this particular council meeting tonight. Moving in our agenda to item number one. Invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Little, would you please serve as a ministerial for the? Invocation and Councilmember Perez is Perez here? Perez will do the pledge of allegiance.
All right, would you back your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and give thanks for all the blessings that you've. Shared with our, our city. We ask that you'd watch over us tonight, make sure that we're kept safe, protect our. First responders and those in the military that are serving both here and beyond. We ask that you give us wisdom, compassion, to make decisions that benefit this city. And we pray these things in your name. Amen.
If you'll join me in pledging allegiance to both the. American flag and the state flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Very good. That's a great way to start off a meeting. That's a great way to start off a meeting and I appreciate, appreciate your good work on that. Madam Secretary, we, I will confirm and certify a quorum for the council meeting for tonight. Which is item number three on the agenda. Moving to item number four, citizen comments. I bear pro tem little.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three citizens registered to speak tonight. You don't have a clock on your screen. You have three minutes to speak. When you get to thirty seconds, please start wrapping up your comments. Before you begin to speak, you state your name and address and I'll call you in the order that you find out. First person is Felicia Harris-Hoss.
Uh, she is not in the meeting.
Okay, we'll come back to her then. The. Second person is Jeff Hunkle.
Hello there. My name is Jeff Hunkle, thirty-nine, twelve, Oakwood Drive, Pearland, Texas, seven, seven, five, eight, one. In my continued research to review all budget and spending avenues of the city. I noticed the city credit card document on the city's website said the contract with Citibank is expired on August thirty-first. Is there a new document that outlines the new terms? Also, has the city shopped around for a card with a higher rebate rate or has it stayed at one point nine-three percent? Because with an average of seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per month, every percentage makes a huge difference. Finally, are there any fees associated with us being able to get the reward rate we do? I'd like to address consent agenda item K. I remember this item from last year's September sixteenth agenda where I also spoke asking council to consider a creative way to handle utility bill. Last year, I said, why make us all pay for services only a select few use? We live in a digital world where most of us opt out of getting paper bills. So I suggested allowing customers to opt out of paper bills. And those that want it, we charge them a dollar fee to cover these costs and thereby saving the city two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I assume that since this item is again included in this year's agenda item. Um, my idea was not implemented, which combined would have saved four hundred and ninety thousand dollars with zero cost to implement. Can we get an update on how many people did elect to have paper bills and total cost of billing and mailing for this item? Finally, I too have been affected by the water billing issue. I have been tracking all of my usage for the last two years. I was billed fifty-seven hundred gallons each month for the last year and a half until the new meter was installed. Then my bill increased to sixty-six hundred gallons, even though this was nine hundred gallons more. I attributed it to the new meter being more accurate. However, my bill has continued to increase each month and the most recent bill for October fifth, my usage is now up to ten thousand six hundred gallons. Which is almost double the original amount. A hundred and thirty more gallons per day seems a bit extreme. So I called the water department and guess what I was told to do? Check for a leak. Now, if it were a leak, why would it continue to increase gradually? So a technician is coming to check the unit tomorrow. The conditions in my house haven't changed, so I wonder if these meters are truly accurate. Or maybe not set to read the water usage correctly. But if someone can offer any reason why my usage increased, five thousand gallons per month would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, sir. Next person signed up to speak is Charles McMurray.
Good evening, Charles McMurray, fifty-two oh nine. I guess we started right. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mike Charles McMurray, fifty-two oh nine, Spring Bridge Drive, Pearland, Texas. Good evening and thanks for your time serving as elected official. I guess it's as tough as it is, I'm a school board member right now, I would think. Talking about this evening, I want to talk about municipal court. This meeting started with a pledge of allegiance. That's important to my subjects. If each of you, if each of us pledged allegiance, not to a piece of cloth, our flag. But to the allegiance to the concept, the principles of our constitutional republic. If one of our presidents may have said, our government is governed for and by the people. Legitimate authority rests with our citizens. Previously, I emailed each of you on July, each of the council members on July the twenty-second and again on August the eleventh of this year. My concerns regarding the style of public access that municipal courts judicial case records. I'm fully confident, if you explore this matter with any attorney, there should only be one answer. Judicial case records are open to the public to view and copy with only a few, very few limiting circumstances not applicable to my request from last summer. I also informed you that I filed a formal complaint with the Texas Commission on Judicial Conduct. And I subsequently received complaint number twenty dash eleven eighty-four, which is presently being reviewed by the commission. I'm sure everything is slow because of COVID nineteen. And waiting on a response from the court and things like that. I have rhetorical questions for each of you to ponder in your official capacity as the reappointment of the municipal court judge by this council is pending. My rhetorical questions are as follows. What type of court is it when the court itself fails to follow the statutory law? What type of court is it when the court plainly is plainly disregarding relevant case law? What type of governmental organization sends out letters to specific individuals such as myself? Denying a legitimate request without plainly identifying the author of the letter as our municipal court has done in my circumstance. This to me is a matter of essential principles of government. It's up to each of you to protect my rights and the rights of all of your fellow citizens in this matter. I will be awaiting your future decision. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is Felicia Harris-Hoss on, Josh?
She is still not in the meeting.
Okay, Mayor, that completes our citizen comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving to item five, which is public hearings, and we have none tonight. Item number six on our agenda is the consent agenda. Well, that's got Mayor Pro Tem to. Tell me what's the numbers for and it would be withdrawn. And we are withdrawing. Item E, is it easy? F as in Frank, K as in King, and Q as in Queen. Am I correct, Mayor Pro Tem?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay, with that information on the record. Let me move to Councilmember Olondo, our expert on the consent agenda. Thank you so much. I love it.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six oh, so move.
Hi, Vic Perez.
With the items removed.
We need to take a vote on items A through S, minus those four.
Yeah, that's my mistake. Um, consideration and possible action only consented into items A through.
Don't we have to withdraw the motion on the floor?
Yes, that would be technically the motion can be withdrawn and if there's a consensus by everybody that a motion can be withdrawn, it can be withdrawn by. Uh, the person who made the motion unless there's an objection.
Objection.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw that. Um, and make a motion, uh, consideration of possible action, consent agenda. Items A through S with the exception of items E, F, K, and Q.
Thank you, Perez.
So we have a motion?
Second.
We do have a second. Any further comments about the city council? Here you go, Madam Secretary.
Member Orlando? Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Moore? Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens? The motion passes to, um, to approve consent items A through S with the exception of E, F, K, and Q.
Okay.
Uh, to item E, consideration of possible action resolution number R twenty twenty.
Second, Little.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Uh, item E, Echo, is a contract for professional services. Uh, this is with Jeff Ward and Associates and they are going to perform buyout acquisition services in a variety of areas. Flood prone, uh, that we've had experience with and, uh, uh, we need these to, uh, make sure that, uh. The procedures are followed and they're familiar with the rules with FEMA and so forth. Uh, the city would, uh, uh, be reimbursed for the cost of any acquisitions, but then we. Uh, maintain, uh, certain properties and add those to our, uh, requirements for these flood prone areas. So nothing to add, sir.
Mayor, this is Woody. Um, I asked for that to be pulled. And I don't know if you could do it or not, but if we go to page five, it'd have the information on there that I want to talk about for just a minute. And, uh. It's the pricing. Uh, that we have on there.
State your question.
There you go. And then, no, 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 that's, that's not it. Total, there you go, the total pricing that we had. Uh, Clay, the only thing that bothers me about that, I mean. You're getting a low price of seventy-four thousand on there, but if you look on all the way down, uh, HDR set at three hundred and thirteen thousand. My concern is either, uh, and I'm, I'm sure Jeffrey Ward and him have done this before. Uh, I don't know if there's something we missed that, uh, would kick that seventy-four thousand up to a higher level at some point for a change order. Or either that or the other people that are, uh, turned in a bid on it, response for it. Uh, didn't really know what they were doing, but they, uh, would, would think about trying to get it in, especially three hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, dollars and these are people that, some people that we have used before. I just think it, when you get down to look at the, uh, from, uh, the second one on down. I think, you know, basically somebody was trying to get in our pocket. Uh, on this, or they didn't understand what was going on. And, and that could be one of the things there that they didn't know what they were, uh, presenting on to, to give a price for it. And the other part would be that, uh. Seventy-four thousand is a lot of difference between that three hundred and thirteen thousand. And, and, but I know that these people have done this work before and so they. Pretty sure they know what's going on. So I really don't think there's going to be a change order coming in, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars or what later on. On there, but, but I do have concern with these other people that are bidding this at that high dollar and there's, these are some people that are doing work with us. Uh, previously on some different type of contracts. And so there's, to me, there's just a big concern. When you get that big of a spread, uh, from a low to the high, uh, something is just not exactly right. So. That, that was my concern about, uh, looking at this and seeing where it's at now and, uh. Making sure that we're, we're getting, uh, the best for our dollar here and, and somebody's not trying to get to us later on, on this. So. I just want to make sure that, that we feel comfortable, uh, with these people and what they're, what we're asking for in services. Is, is along with the seventy-four thousand and not the three hundred and thirteen thousand. So I, you know, I would just be cautious on it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to answer that exactly. There was, uh, you know, the, the number of bidders and, uh. While the HDR, the three thirteen is on the high end, they're, at least the next couple are more in the ballpark and, uh. You know, there was no concerns ever raised from the responses for the, the ward, uh, low price, so it'll follow a standard. Requirements once awarded for, uh, making, they, they met the requirements and we, we're comfortable with that at this point.
Company being out of, uh, Leesburg, Virginia, do we pay for their expenses to come here?
We're paying them the seventy-four thousand dollars. So, uh, what they're doing and, and, uh, how they get to that, that's kind of their business, but.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Your bet.
If there are any other questions or comments? I don't hear any from the council. I'll ask for, uh, Madam Secretary, I want we head on into a motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando? Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion pass, the motion carries seven to zero to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six zero.
Okay, with that good news, let's move to item number F on our agenda. Councilmember Longo?
Consideration of possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six.
Second, this is more.
Okay, that information, the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a standard process. Uh, when we have a construction project, you did this recently with fire station that I recall. Uh, but this is for our new surface water treatment plant and, uh, it's part of that work. Uh, we come in and give Center Point the, uh, blanket easement for the property. And then once it's constructed, they, uh, will, uh, firm that up and we'll come back with, uh, a proper, uh, narrow easement, but this allows them the flexibility in the meantime. Nothing to add.
Councilmember, have a question or comments at this point?
Mayor, this is Woody. I, I, the only comment I had, and it was really for Darren on there. We, we've done his blanket easements before, but. Uh, as it seems on here that, uh, it allows for them to put a third party in the right of way. Uh, as they're part of it. Is that something if we give them this blanket easement, that they can bring a third party in there and charge them to come down to the easement?
Uh, I'll sort of, I don't know if Anthony's, well, Anthony Vu's probably not on the line, but it's, the easements that we've granted have contained that same language. Actually conveyed those easements to any third parties. I'm not aware if that's actually been a practice. Uh, but that has been the standard language it's been in these easements.
Darren Anthony is on the line. Anthony, you're a muted.
Just to, to follow with what Darren said, um, the language has been consistent with what we have done in the past. Um, allowing Center Point to go on to the, uh, the property to install the facilities needed.
We've dealt with Center Point many times through there and I have in other places and. We gave them a blanket easement, not with the city here, but in other places I've been. Uh, there that, that what they're able to do, they're able to come in and put another, uh, third party in there, but they would charge them. Uh, to go in that same easement that were what a dollar a year or dollar charge on there. So that is another thing I was thinking about.
No, and that's a, that's a valid point, Council. Uh, just to also remind that this particular easement is a blanket easement. So it's a, it's really over the, the property right now. And the actual easement area and the final easement will be narrowed down to a smaller area later on, once it's, once it is a clearly defined area. So right now, I think they're. The point being is that in a blanket easement, they don't want to restrict, since it's really applying to a large area, they don't want to restrict their ability to allow other. Individuals to have easements over that area. And then, once we narrow it down to our easement area, they can still go adjacent to that area. And, uh, with a separate easement and not have been prohibited through this, uh, uh, blanket easement.
Okay, so that wouldn't have any bearing on, uh, blowout easements, aerial part or coming in and putting. Verizon wireless or whoever and in, on their poles.
That's correct.
Okay.
Further comment or questions? That's what? Apparently we got a motion second on the floor here.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The, the, uh, motion carries to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six five.
Okay, with that information on the record, your fourth expression, I'm going to zoom down to item K.
All right, consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six six.
Second, this is more.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a renewal for a contract we bid out for the printing of our, uh, utility bills during the year, printing and mailing services. So it's, uh, comprehensive. Uh, for the time period stated. Nothing to add, sir.
Good. Council, any question or comment on this item?
I just asked, uh, to pull that, uh, to see on there the difference in the pricing. Of what we got and, and, uh, and we're asking for additional funds of two hundred and forty-five thousand for the biz two thirty-nine.
Sorry, where are you seeing the two thirty-nine? I see page. It's two forty-five. Where you got the? Oh.
Thing.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep. So was there an escalator, uh, John, or was it allowed in the contracts? Does it mean no?
It's actually a unit price contract and that was based on the estimated number of, uh, bills that were. Initially part of the proposal and what you'll see if you look in there, it shows the last two years in usage. And so what we're recommending. And what you'll see, if you look in there, it shows the last two years in usage, and so what we're recommending. Is based on that usage, and it's a unit price cost, we're estimating it at two hundred and forty-five thousand, based on what's actually, we actually use.
So that's just a growth in the customer base, I assume, then, multiplied times that?
Yeah, it's it's the actual number of bills that we send out. That's correct.
Okay, so that's that's the difference in the, between the two forty-five and two thirty-nine. And knowing that the low bid is. This is higher than the low bid by about twenty-five hundred dollars.
No, the the unit price is the same. It's the low unit price, and then it's just extended for the quantity.
Okay. All right, so that two forty-five just extended for the quantity on there then?
Sir.
Possibility. Okay.
Council, any further question or comment?
Mayor, if I could add one thing, since this item was pulled, I just wanted to say that I did see in the write-up that the E-bill enrollment is up, which. I'm very happy to see that. I asked that question last time if we could push that, so it looks like more people are enrolling in the E-bill, so. That's good because it's saving us money, and as far as charging an additional for a paper bill, you know, I I think that was brought up. Last time, and whenever I talked to people, particularly senior citizens who are on fixed income, they were very much against having to pay anything additional. Seeing as they're primarily the people, I think, who are receiving paper bills, aren't really comfortable with email, things like that, so, you know, I I just wanted to address Mr. Unkle's comments on that. I did speak to multiple residents about that and got that feedback, so, but I'm glad to see E-bill enrollments up, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Any other comment from questions, council? Adam Secretary, I believe we got a motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando. Member Carbon.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez. Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six six.
Let's move to the royal one, Queen Q. Councilmember Longo.
Action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six eight, so move.
I've had a second there, I heard, and we have motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. So this is a contract for professional services, obviously with AM Trace. Went through to seek competitive, our professional proposals for public health evaluation advisory services. Obviously, this is not something that is in our wheelhouse, but with COVID has been very necessary. And this would be somebody to bring alongside and help us with our internal protocols, understanding the varying data and come up with recommendations. And, you know, the the three different counties that we have to deal with and giving us our own Pearland advice for that. So, you know, this is a reimbursable expense under that Texas Cares Act, and so for that, I thought this was a good expenditure to. That expertise and, you know, make sure, you know, we we extended our staff as far as we can, I think, in terms of. Their expertise and and learning about this, and we need some help towards this, and as is described in the memo, those deliverable packages, we'd have them, and so. That that's the recommendation and and seek your concurrence tonight. Nothing to add, sir.
Good. Council, any question or comment based on the staff report?
Mayor, this is Councilman Little. They mean Councilman Carbon pulled this one together. I guess a couple of issues for me. Number one, why are we just now. Bringing in public health services when COVID's been around since February, March? And secondly, pretty widespread news today that a vaccine will be widely available. Probably by the end of October, first of November. Do we want to rethink this in light of that news?
So I'll I'll break those up. First off, you know, obviously, you know, the the virus may have showed up back then, but. It's been a long burn as it's ramped up and then expanded over the summertime in terms of its intensity and infections, so. And then the Texas Cares Act, but for having that as a reimbursable. I don't know that we'd be in the same spot to be able to recommend this, but it is, and so here we are. So once we, you know, the summertime with the intensity, the Texas Cares Act, you know, it takes time to. Go out and and write the proposals and bring those back, so that's what it brings back, so it's a a not to exceed, so it's not saying that it's automatic. You know, if, in fact, the need doesn't prove out, you know, that's a different thing. I guess we could have brought it in for smaller and and then brought it back to you again after we got close to some amount, but. And then, you know, as far as vaccine goes, I think, you know, everybody's looking forward to that, but as you know, there's no certainties at all, and. You know, even if that is, that's not a panacea, that doesn't flip a switch whenever that comes out in terms of other implications and all that, so. You know, understand the concern, but I think it's still, you know, another case point would be even today, over the weekend, as I shared to y'all. The 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 information we got from the state spiked up the active cases, and so. You know, somebody that's that does this for a living to to do that would be one element of that, and again, this is a. An hourly rate, I guess, for the professional services, so we could direct them towards something like that. As we start to reopen, make sure that we've got our protocols right and all of that and get that advice, so that that's the thinking of it.
It is a question or a comment from council?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess two, two, two points around this. As as you shared out earlier, Clay, I mean, the the data we got from the state down through the county shows a three hundred percent increase over the past few days, and. That's that's wrong. I mean, your your email hits on it, but but those are lagging tests, and some of those tests were back from May, so. I guess I want to make sure that that the the professionals we're engaging with are going to scrub that data. And and I guess not just take what's spoon-fed from from the state and the counties and actually put it together. I mean, I'd love to see some of these graphs remodeled, adjusted for when the tests were taken as opposed to when they were, when they were read. Because that that just, it it seems like a huge bit of misinformation out there. So I guess that that's one point. The the second one is. I just want to make sure that that we're communicating with both the citizens, because I mean, we're spending. Spending tax dollars for these experts, so anything that we can share out, I I'd like to make sure we have, we we continue to do that as we have with the dashboards. As well as with our school districts. I mean, they're facing the the school reopenings and phasing in and. You know, they're they're struggling with looking at this data as well, so if we're bringing on the experts, I hope we can share out to to both. Pearland and Alvin and our other districts in the city with what our experts are are seeing and. Kind of what the normalized data looks like, because that just, that seems like a huge, a huge glaring issue in the in the data that. In my, at least in my opinion, causes causes an alarm that shouldn't be there.
Yep. So agreed, you know, and and I think that kind of makes the point too of the firm that we brought alongside, there's going to be a meeting with them. Later this week, and they do work in Texas, and they are familiar with idiosyncrasies of of that information, and they'd be positioned well to. Do exactly what you said in terms of going back and normalizing that and making sure that we don't unduly. You know, show that that bump that's not really there. Took, you know, we we kind of understand it, we we done some digging on our own, but, you know, it's, again, I. You know, like you said, for not just us, but other people look at that and say, what's this? And I just think we want to have somebody that does this for a living and not us. You know, I don't want to underestimate our skill level, but you know what I'm saying, so.
I guess along those lines, I've heard nothing but good feedback from the community with Dr. Orlia, our Parks doctor. He seems to to put that PhD to work around this, and I I appreciate that, and it's nice to know we have him on staff, but we're bringing the professionals alongside now.
Yep. Thank you.
And that communication piece, I mean, we'll make sure that we push that out.
Yep, yes, sir. So I should mention that too. So you you know us, we're very, want to share that out, and, you know, we've got great relationships with the entities that you mentioned. We try to keep up good rapport with the county health agencies themselves, so, you know, we we know it's a. You know, we say it a lot, but it's a team sport, and we need to share that, and so, you know, just like any other information, you know, what we learn, we're very happy to spread that around.
Any other question or comment from council?
Mayor, if I could, on this, when I was looking at QIS, one of the other bidders, one of the things that jumped out to me was just kind of, they had a different, it looked like a different. Offering service, offering of services from trace, and one of those things was specifically looking at the way that we can partic, can potentially augment our staff internally to help support. Whatever recommendations are made moving forward, and I just wanted to double check that that was something that was. Maybe included in here, because I saw that one of the concerns on the the scoring was that for trace, there were some long-term commitment elements. And so, I mean, if that's something that we can support certain elements of the recommendations internally, I wanted to make sure that that was something that was discussed and will be part of this package as well. Because I don't think it was explicitly stated as such.
Dr. Orlia, if you're online, but can address that specific, or if you just want to follow up that as another point?
Yes, sir. Member Hernandez, that, what, where you saw us note that with the other firm? Or more specifically, them noted in regard to training staff, it was listed in such a way that they outlined more or less us doing what AM Trace is going to be performing for us. The reason that the bid was given to AM Trace is that the work is going to be provided by, exactly as Mr. Pearson really appropriately named it by the pros. And the one of the deliverables will be a set of policies and procedures that will fully equip the appropriate staff to continue the work that AM Trace starts.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for the feedback.
Council have another question or comment at this point?
Mayor, this is Woody. I've got a question on the D and E. It's on page one of eighteen. And it's just some clarification, and probably it's because I don't know and understand this. But they're supposed to give us supporting documents on structural calculation, drainage reports, geotechnical reports. Is, and have all records of drawings. Is that part of this contract, or is that some language out of an engineering contract?
It sounds like a template that we use, so it just says we get whatever they create for on our behalf, we get, so obviously, I think that just carry over to this.
That is what I was wondering, because it, you know, it it says item B of of what the return is, and E. Of estimates of reports and things that they give us drawings and and has to be in a TIF format for the city.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get any drainage reports from these guys.
I I don't either, but I thought, well, maybe we slid the wrong contract in there somewhere. Okay, that's it.
Okay, any other question? Any other question committed by council at this point? That's some good discussion there. I appreciate that. Madam Secretary, I think we got a motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando. Carbon.
Aye.
Member Little. Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion carries to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one six eight.
Okay, Q for Queen closed out the consent agenda. Now let's move to item number seven on our agenda. Matters removed from the consent agenda and the those four items which we have just discussed. Item. Number eight, which is new business. Starting off our new business is Councilmember Carbon. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, second and final reading of ordinance fifteen ninety-four, so move.
Second, little.
Motion and second, we're in staff in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, let me share with you, two weeks ago, we have an opportunity to refund some of our existing outstanding debt structure. For lower interest and interest savings to the city. Not all bonds are callable all the time, but they are some package, and the rate environment is such that. Financial advisors brought these to us. These are comport with our financial policies that require a certain level minimum requirement for savings to the city. The amount of it, I believe, has increased a little bit, which is a good thing, and that just means we found other additional issues, but I won't take Mr. Robuck's thunder. He needs to earn his keep here. Mr. Robuck's got a presentation for you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Mayor, council members, again, John Robuck, thank you, Mr. Pearson. This is essentially the same presentation we had a couple of weeks ago. The only difference, well, really, there's two differences. Number one. We took Councilmember Carbon's request and added a sourcing uses, which we'll go through in a second. And second. During our diligence of the debt, we actually went through with bond counsel and also talked to the verification agent. We found about three points, eight million dollars additional bonds that generate about one point two more, one point two million dollars more in savings for the city. We've included this in the presentation, and it also, as a result, still falls below or within the parameters we discussed a couple of weeks ago that you all approved in your vote. On page one of the presentation is, again, a summary of the current bond market. The rate actually now is at two point two two percent, not a two point one five down the far right, but it's still within twenty basis points of all-time low, so we're still in a great environment to sell bonds and lock in some savings for the refunding. Page two, again, was a summary of the estimated cost savings the city has realized since twenty fifteen. John, if you don't mind, turn to page two. I'm sorry. There we go. Again, we've we've, over the last couple of years, we've recognized about thirty-eight point eight million savings for taxpayers. By implementing bond programs and also prepaying of existing bonds with cash to reduce the interest cost. Page three of the presentation goes to the proposed bonds to be refunded. The permanent improvement bond series twenty eleven, they're the first bond issue there is the additional three point eight million dollars of bonds we can refund on a callable, on a current basis. The blended yield of the two issues, the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve bonds, is about a three point two nine nine percent. And again, this is a refunding to generate interest cost savings, not a restructuring. We're actually taking. Bonds with have a higher interest rate and replacing with bonds that have a lower rate, and based on the current markets, we believe we can lower that interest cost from a three point two nine nine percent down to one point. Two seven two percent, almost a little over two percent drop in interest cost rate for the city, which generates the savings which we'll go through on pages four and five. Page four is the sources and uses. Because of the addition two thousand eleven bonds to be refunded, the principal amount were estimated to be about thirty million, six hundred thousand in principal. Plus about five point six million dollars in premium generated and sell the bonds. Last year expenses and also an issue of contribution, which is a transfer for, transfer from the debt service fund at closing. Generate some proceeds necessary to pay those bonds off and lock in the savings. And again, estimate savings is about three point six million, well, almost over three point six million dollars over about a twelve, excuse me, about a fifteen-year period, and that's shown on page five. We believe we can generate about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in savings a year of the next fifteen years, which equates to about three point six million in savings overall. And a present value savings percentage of a nine point five one six percent, which is well above the three point, three percent. Present value threshold and well above the five percent threshold that we say usually is a automatic to to do a refunding, so we're. We're in great territory to reckon, recognize some savings for the city, and to do so, we'll go to page seven, which is the schedule of events. We actually are almost in the middle of this schedule of events. We're on September fourteenth. We're asking you to approve the bond ordinance again tonight. We already have a draft preliminary official statement, which was sent out this morning for comments from all the parties involved. We'll have writing calls the week of October fifth, and we'll sell the bonds the week of October twenty-sixth. We actually have penciled in Wednesday, October twenty-eighth is the sale date, and then we'll close the bonds. We actually have penciled in Wednesday, October 38th is the sale date and then we'll close the bonds on December 3rd. I'll be happy to answer your questions you have on the presentation. Rick Witty, your bond council is also on the call tonight. And I'm sure he'll be happy to answer your questions you have on the bond ordinance. We're asking you to approve again tonight.
The question to comment here.
Mayor, just a couple. Thanks for putting the sources and uses in there. So we can see they're all making money off of this. So looking at the schedule of events, not until October 26th, do we have the rates locked in? So give us an idea of that parameter. Like how, how far can rates move without this coming back to us?
Well, we're, we're doing not exceed 35 million in principal amount to be issued to refund these bonds. And then the parameter order is a, has to exceed, I believe it's 3% present value savings. Now, that being said, council member, if, if we get to a place where savings is starting to fall off, we're going to have a conversation with Mr. McCarter and Mr. Pearson about that savings and we'll communicate with the council if it gets below probably about 5%.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The question to comment this for counsel? That was a good presentation, a good move on our part. We have motion second on the floor here, Madam Secretary.
Member Carbonne. Member Little.
I.
Member Hernandez.
Hi.
Member Moore. Member Moore. Is member Moore on the phone?
I.
Member Perez.
I.
Member Owens. Member Owens.
It's I was on mute.
Member Orlando.
I.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt ordinance number 1574.
Let's move into item number two of our new business agenda. Councilmember Little, would you?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action. First reading of the ordinance number 1595. So moved.
Second Perez.
Have motion on a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the first of two readings for your annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1. This is a culmination of the work that's been going on by the council over the last two months, but by the staff over the last six months and want to thank them. It's a complex effort. And then the backdrop of the changing environment, we always live in a dynamic environment here. But, you know, COVID and everything, while our worst assumptions have not come anything close to what had been at least contingencyed, we still have made accommodations and we're in a good position with a balanced budget, adding the fund balance, adding public safety, adding streets and sidewalks and lowering the property tax rate to below the no new revenue rate. But Mr. McCarter will go through a presentation just for you and the public to remind and for the record. So, Mr. McCarter.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight to present this first reading of our fiscal year 2021 budget. Do what I, before we dive into the details of the budget itself, just kind of rehash the process that we've been through. As Mr. Pearson mentioned, this has been a work in progress for quite some time now, starting back in February. Then the adoption of the CIP back in August, presentation of the budget, we've been through two budget discussions and a public hearing. This is the first reading of the ordinance, not just for the budget and pay plans, but also for the tax rate and for the fee updates as well. We'll be back here two weeks from tonight for the final reading of each one of those items as well. So for tonight's agenda, first we'll, we'll approve the budget here. We'll, we'll consider the budget here. Next, move on to the tax rate ordinance. We'll add a note that because we are below the no new taxes tax rate, we will not have council members read. A dedicated motion can be just a standard motion. That has not been the case in the past, but because this tax rate is lower than that known new taxes rate, we won't have that specific language needing to be used. And then lastly, we will have the, the first reading of the non-development fees. We do not have the development fees being considered here tonight because we are not proposing any changes to the development fee ordinance. There's two fee ordinances. Usually we read both of those, but through this process, we're just looking at those non-development fees. So looking big picture at the, the budget as a whole, we've been through this a lot, but want to just acknowledge that we're at a balanced budget here. That means that our operating revenues are even. They actually exceed expenditures. General funds, fund balance is above our policy minimum, which increases to 60 days of total expenditures at mid-year ahead of schedule. So we are moving towards that, that goal here. We are making investments in people who deliver the services daily and, and costs that drive much of the increase in our expenditures. We do want to just acknowledge and follow up on, on a, really the only discussion item that came out of the last budget discussion that would result in a tangible change to the budget here tonight, and that's professional development. Off the last city council meeting, we did get direction from city council to reduce the city council professional development budget by half. And then all the other general fund professional development spending by 10%. The breakout of how we would do that administratively is in the memo attached to tonight's agenda. So you can see all the details on that. We will need an amendment to tonight's ordinance to incorporate those changes and we'll have some specific language for you all to use if and when you choose to move ahead with that. But we have put that up and slated that for inclusion tonight. So numbers included in the, the ordinance tonight do not have the reduction of 10%. But we can update that at, at, at the end of this discussion. So getting into some of the highlights tonight. Want to acknowledge what's in this budget and for those of you who followed along in the process, a lot of this is kind of rehashing what we've talked about before. But we do have 12 new firefighters being added to this budget that'll give us enough firefighters to open our new fire station number eight coming up just in, in the near future now. Two new sworn officers in the police department. Those officers would be dedicated for dedicated patrols. The police vehicle replacement program, this million dollars would catch us up and, and get rid of all of the Crown Victorias currently in our fleet. Cybersecurity training, the $9,000 split between general fund and water and sewer. Street and sidewalk funding, $1.5 million. This is an increase of just about $200,000 from the proposed budget per changes made by city council through this process. The community survey done every two years included here as a highlight of $30,000. Then the cost of living adjustment, which is 2% standard step pay for civil servants, civil service employees rather, and standard longevity payout across all funds, right at about $1.3 million. Also want to acknowledge what's not in the budget. So there's a lot of wants and needs in the, in the city and we don't always have the resources to fund all of those. I want to start out with that acknowledgement of the streets and sidewalks funding. Always a central point of focus for us here throughout the budget discussion for our friends in public works year round. But we are short by roughly $3.1 million from our target amount that would keep our payment condition index or PCI flat with the current relatively good rating that we currently have. We also have $23.6 million in eligible general fund vehicle replacements that are not funded for replacement here in this budget. Also $5 million in supplemental staffing requests in general fund. Staffing, when we talk to departments about their needs is usually the number one ask. It's also the most expensive ask. And as you can see here, it's really across all funds, public safety leading the way. But really across all functions, this need for additional staff not included in this budget. And then lastly, $600,000 for non-staff supplementals. So these are, a lot of these are non-recurring or contractual expenses not included in this budget. Again, staffing highlights here. So the net add for our FTEs this fiscal year 2021 will be 14, with two of those coming through, through police funded in January and then slating our fire operations firefighters coming in six in November and six in January. Looking broad strokes at our, our, our general fund revenue here broken out by classification. The biggest dollar amount jump that we see here is for our property taxes, again, at the no new taxes rate, really attributable to the growth in assessed value we've seen throughout the community over the last year. Sales tax adjusted slightly up from our proposed budget to our current estimate. That was after we closed the month of August and were able to see how the numbers were shifting. As Mr. Pearson mentioned in his intro, good news for us is that our community has been relatively resilient from a financial perspective, revenue perspective rather, in, in terms of sales tax revenue, moving down charges for services. We see a, a pretty big jump here, which is driven by the resumption of parks and recreation services. Next year, we saw a reduction of about a million dollars as we canceled really all the summer programming, unfortunately. This year due to COVID-19, we also see an increase here from the TERS administrative fee, which is driven by property taxes, but received by the city as a charge for service. Those reflected here. We see a drop in our franchise fees. This is just realizing the full year of some legislative changes that were made relative to telephone and cable franchise fees with some nominal growth in other areas. Transfers in nominal change there, license and permit, also another one that was slightly adjusted upward because of positive, positive performance over the last few months. Just in August, we had one of our best months in terms of permit revenue that we've seen in recent years, despite the economic turmoil going on. So we did adjust back up just ever so slightly for fiscal year 2021. Fines and forfeitures and increase getting us really back to some semblance of normalcy. This is one of the revenue sources that we projected to see a very steep drop as courts have been closed and frankly, there's just been less people out and about in the community. So there's just less fines and forfeitures going on. This has more or less met our projections, but we do see ourselves getting back to somewhat of a, of a normal activity basis here in, in fiscal year 2021, as knock on wood, hopefully we, we return to some sense of normalcy writ large. The reduction in, in miscellaneous services looks like a big drop, but a lot of that, all of it is because of non-recurring revenue that we received in this fiscal year. First is related to Hurricane Harvey from back in 2017. Been two and a half years in, in the making to receive that revenue, but we did get that revenue into the general fund this fiscal year. And then revenue for COVID-19 expenses as well will come in. Obviously those are not recurring revenue. So they just drop off the board for next fiscal year. Looking at general fund expenditures, we see here broken out by function, the largest increase here we see in public safety that jumping from 47.8 to 51.3 largely driven by cost of living, step pay, longevity. Also those 14 additional staff members we talked about pushing that up to where it's at now. General government here shown an increase from 11 million to 11.8 million, really predominantly driven by the cost of living adjustment there. No new staff added there. Public works we see staying flat. Parks and recreation seemingly a, a large jump of 800,000. But again, that's just realizing kind of a return to normalcy for a department that was hit very hard by COVID-19 and the cancellation of those programs equated to a, a sharp drop in, in expenditures there. Then community services nominal increase really driven by the COLA and the community survey. And you see transfers staying relatively flat. Looking at general fund expenditures by classification. So we talked about where we're spending the money. What are we spending the money on? We say this over and over again, but salaries and wages are our number one expenditure, both in terms of the cost and the value to the city. We would not be who we are without our people. That increase in $4.4 million, you know, 14 new staffs, COLA, step and longevity pay all built into there. As you can see, as we go down and I won't hit on all of these really nominal changes throughout throughout the, the individual classifications themselves. Moderate increase in the miscellaneous services, really getting back to some sense of normalcy on the COVID-19 that took a hit there. That includes a lot of contractual services that were not provided this summer. See the motor pool fund transfers moving up that realizes more replacements this year than we had in the past, along with those lease fees and maintenance fees that are built in there as a part of the base budget. Again, building up that motor pool fund balance, which is what we like to see. I won't go through any of these other ones, but we can open up any questions at the end if, if needed. So we roll all that up to the, the general fund income statement here. And, you know, we like to summarize this using some of these kind of success factors at the bottom here. We want to say this is a net add to fund balance. We have a city council established goal to get to 25%. You know, we've talked about getting there over the course of several years. This here today is around 22%, so that exceeds our, our policy minimum. And what's shown here is the absolute minimum. That's two months or 16.6%. But we exceed that amount by about 4.9 million dollars here. Also, our, our credit reading worth noting just last July was affirmed by both Mooney's and Fitch. Mooney's removed our, our quote unquote negative outlook that we had. That was really for two reasons. One, our addition of fund balance that has continued through this budget and that we have committed to as a city over the last several years. And number two, our, our assumptions and our conservative and frankly aggressive actions we took in the face of COVID-19 to make sure that we remain solvent and we remain in a good position financially. Again, structurally balanced and I would argue most importantly of all, this maintains our core services. So while we talk about some of the larger economic impacts of the city, some, you know, really fundamental changes in how we operate. We have a budget here in front of us that maintains those core services at excellent level of service throughout our, our entire department, our entire city in every department. So moving along to the, the debt service fund, the other half of that property tax rate. We'll start with the debt to assessed value chart, which is kind of the way that we measure whether or not we have the ability to pay our debt. And there's a lot of information going on here in this chart, but essentially the bars here show you how much debt is outstanding, while the green line shows you our debt to assessed value. The reason we look at debt to assessed value is because the assessed value is what really drives our ability to pay. If you think about it, the property tax rate is based on the assessed value. So as the assessed value goes up, we generate more from a nominal change in that, that property tax rate and thus have more capacity to, to take on more debt or manage the debt that we currently have. Really important to point out that as we start in early 2019 and moving in to 2021 highlighted here in gray, that we see the increase really driven by two sources predominantly. As the 2007 bonds start to fall off, we see the 2019 bonds start to come on. Those were voted approved back in May. And then in orange here, our TERS certificates of obligation really should say TERS reimbursable certificates of obligation because the city is paying interest only until a balloon payment comes and this, and the TERS picks up that whole tab. That means that they pay interest and principal on those. So while they're reflected here in this chart, it is really important to understand that the TERS will end up paying for those when the time comes. So looking at the debt service fund income statement here, again, similar to the, the general fund, we see an increase here in the property tax side, total revenue going up of about $1.3 million. Expenditures similarly going up by about 3 million. We do have a planned drawdown of expenditures here of about $1.1 million. And that planned drawdown is, is to make sure that we're staying close to our policy minimum, that 10% reserve. We don't want to build up an excess amount of reserves here in the debt service fund because we want to utilize that to keep the rate down. So this budget accomplishes that. We'll have a targeted excess of about $614,000, 618, I'm sorry, rather, $1,000 at the end of this fiscal year, moving ahead, which puts us in a position to have some flexibility if those property taxes don't come in the way that they do and doesn't result in, in a large excess fund balance there. So enterprise fund, this is the, the city's fund that is managed through our, our water and sewer revenues. Looking at the fund highlights here, the other half of the cybersecurity training that will be housed in IT. The CCTV mainline inspection system through public works, about $130,000 there. We also have a right of way inspector with vehicle for about $90,000 and administrative assistant for $54,000. And then lastly, a utility billing team that consists of a reclassification of an existing position to a utility billing manager and a addition of two new billing specialists for a total of about $110,000 there. Looking at the staffing that, that all taken together is four new FTEs for us this fiscal year, two coming from utility billing with the other two coming from public works for a total of four there. Looking at our major expenditures here, total expenses are 64.4 million, supplemental requests at 392,000, vehicle replacements at 945,000. The big number for operational purposes is water purchases. That is 6.2 million dollars. And then lastly, the big number overall, which is annual debt service, $23.7 million. Worth noting that we did establish a, a separate fund that will house that annual debt service going forward, but still included in that rate, that overall discussion here. So looking at the expenditures here, just another way of seeing this, the other requirements here as the asterisk states, the 37.37.5 million dollars here for other requirements is inclusive of that $23 million of debt service plus transfers to other funds and other inner department, inner fund expenditures. The largest single division here is water production, which includes that purchase of water and really the front end processes that feed the rest of the system. and really the front end processes that feed the rest of the system. Looking at the total enterprise fund summary, so overall, we do have $49.8 million in revenues, $64.4 million in expenditures. You can see at the bottom here, we do exceed our policy minimums here. We maintain our core services and just like in the general fund, we were affirmed for both of our positive ratings back in July 2020. Also, we'll note that there is a separate debt service fund that's not noted here, which is where some of this funding is being allocated to. So with that, I will hand it back to Mr. Pearson for input discussion and action. As I mentioned at the outset, in order to encompass that changes for professional development, we will need an amendment to change the total fund wide expenditures to 89.4 million. So back to you, Mr. Pearson, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for all your work and the whole team. And Mayor Council, thank you for your diligence over the past weeks and months. And I have nothing to add, so thanks, sir.
We've been working this thing since January. I have a question to comment at this point.
Mayor, I'll start it off. John, if you'd just slide back a slide to 21, I believe, yeah, so we look at that revenue, revenue decrease on the enterprise fund. This is accrual or cash?
This includes the year end accrual, so I believe the accounting term is modified accrual.
Okay, so it includes all the water that we expect to collect for this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is that accrual at now? The billing gap?
I should know that because we just put it out in the Thursday packet last week.
Order of nine.
I heard 9.2. I think 9.2 is the number.
Okay. Thanks for getting that pulled together and getting that out. And at some point, I'll, I'll support that motion as outlined, but we'll let the rest of the discussion go on first.
Yeah, the comments or questions at this point for John has his opportunity to make a few comments.
Mayor, this is what is approval, the first approval of the budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Is this for the first of the two readings to approve the budget, 2021 budget?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. This is the first reading.
Okay, let me ask you a question. This is based upon the tax rate looking at point 72. And that'll be the next item that we look at on the budget. Why are we doing the budget approval before we approve the tax rate?
The order of the agenda items is set by state law. We have to approve the budget before we can approve the tax rate.
What was that, John?
The, so the order of the items on the agenda is set by state law. They, we have to approve the budget before we can approve a tax rate to fund the budget.
Okay, why don't we don't approve the tax rate of 72 and say we'll approve it at 71? You have to go back in and change your budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Just want to know why we was in that position, you know, to do that. But that's okay.
You know, we've been working this since January, and I think it reached a pretty good, pretty good position for a city of our size. Any further comments by council at this point?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend the expenditures in the general fund to $89,471,205.
We have a second. Any discussion on that? Staff report, tune in. Thank you. Page that on the staff report. Any further question or comment? I have most a second on form, Madam Secretary.
And just to be clear, this is the amendment. Member Carver made amendments to that, so.
It's just amendments.
Can we hear that amendment again?
It's on page 17. Basically, it's reducing the professional development fees after we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, member Little?
Hi.
Member Hernandez?
Hi.
Member Moore? Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
Hi.
Member Orlando? Member Carbone? The amendment passes seven to zero to amend the expenditures in the general fund
How we need to vote on the original?
We'll go with the original motion.
Yeah, the motion as amended will be the next vote.
Okay. We have a motion as amended. Motion?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We're ready to vote.
Member Little? Member Hernandez?
Hi.
Member Moore? Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens? Member Orlando? Member Carbone? The motion carries seven to zero to amend the, as amended, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1595.
We had more discussion on this item yet? Are we ready to move forward?
So item three will be up next, sir.
Already voted, Mayor, so there's no more discussion.
Okay, moving to item number three. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I know John said I didn't have to read the language, but you made me introduce the tax rate last year and there was an increase. And now I'm excited to announce a decrease, but I don't get to read it. But anyway, consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1596, so move.
Second, this more.
We have a motion. Do we have a second there?
Yes.
Do we have a second? We're in discussion, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is on the property tax rate that supports a large part of the budget that you just approved the first reading. And as I stated earlier, as per the general comments, this is a city reduction of about two cents. And this is below the no new revenue rate as the estate calculates it and far below. Well, the calculation for the, what was the rollback rate is a different animal, but it's below both of those. And so this rate includes the debt service as well as the operations of the city's obligations. And also the debt service includes the in-city mud reimbursements. But Mr. McCarter will go through some of that detail now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to skip over this slide since we covered it last time and dive right into the nuts and bolts here. As Mr. Pearson mentioned, this is a reduction in the overall rate of roughly two cents. Most of that coming from the debt service side, about 1.9 cents there, and then just about 1.18 cent coming on the O and M side. This is below the no new taxes rate, below the voter approved tax rate. So these are also shown, excuse me, relative to $100 on a tax bill. Touched briefly on this in the last presentation, but really the driving factor behind our tax rate is always the taxable value. So the revaluations in the community and the growth have brought about $9.5 billion outside of the Shadow Creek Ranch, TERS Tax Increment Refinancing Zone, which does not go towards our tax rate. This is an 11.8 increase over the prior year. Compare that to, I believe we were about 4% last year. The budget's based upon the certified values for the Fort Ben and Victoria counties. We did get the Harris County valuation, which was really not much different from the preliminary, so it's not updated here, not enough to really move the needle in terms of the revenue for the budget purposes. Historical tax rate increase, again, we see just over a two cent decrease here. $25 million in current collections for the general fund and 35 million for the debt service fund. We can see that as recently as FY 13 to 14, the debt service was about 71% of the levy. And there was just about 30% available for operations. Now we're up to about 42.3% available for operations. And we'll discuss, I believe, at the early budget input session, adopting a policy or a procedure for getting closer to 50/50 on that as well. Mr. Pearson again mentioned the mud rebates in the outset, but we do want to acknowledge and break out the tax rate here. We talk a lot about debt to O and M, but within the debt portion, there is about just over a half a cent, 6.4 cents here of that debt service rate goes towards mud rebates, which are paid out in accordance with mud agreements. And the city at this point really doesn't have any control over. So the blue portion here goes to the mud rebates with the remaining 35 cents going towards the debt service fund piece. And then you see the remaining 30 cents going to general fund operations. That's day to day stuff that we really just talked about in the last presentation. Won't linger too much on this, but want to just recognize again the importance of the debt to assessed value. See here that over the past, really, as we see here since 2005, we see a general trend downward, particularly when you control for the TERS COs, certificates of obligation, which will be paid for in full by the TERS, shown here. Once you take those out, we show a decrease here in 2021 relative to the prior year in terms of debt to assessed value. Looking at the property tax revenue kind of scenario. So over the last few years, we've gotten in the habit of presenting several scenarios, or at least Mr. Pearson includes those in his transmitter letter here. We see this updated here with the TERS administrative fee recalculated. But we see, you know, the tax rate is really determined by the state mandated tax assessor collector calculation worksheet, which was distributed with the budget, is on the website and in the pocket of your binders as well. We see this is below the no new revenue tax rate and below the voter approved tax rate, used to be known as rollback rate. Over here, and you can see the three scenarios here, our proposed tax rate of 72 cents relative to last year's and the other two scenarios put forth here. So what does that mean for customers, for residents rather, here in the city of Pearland? We every year do sample tax bills, so we grab 10 random houses throughout the city, residential homestead houses throughout the city and compare them to one another and see what does that mean for residents. So on a zero growth property that was worth $187,000, you see a decrease of $39 annually in the city of Pearland portion of that tax rate. That's about $3.25 a month. A little more on the opposite end of that spectrum, if we look at a house that's around $450,000, see a 5% increase there up to $472,000. You see an increase of $65 on the city portion of the tax rate. Excuse me, that's about $5.42 per month on the city portion. Also want to recognize always that seniors who are qualified for and have been approved through the county for the senior exemption, the senior freeze here in Pearland will not pay any more in taxes than their senior freeze limit regardless of what the value of their property does. So the example here, you see a 3.7% increase on the value, $0 change in the taxes assessed here by the city of Pearland. So looking at the total property tax bill, the previous slides, we had looked really just isolating ourselves here. But we want to make sure that we recognize and appreciate the fact that the city of Pearland is just one line on a larger tax bill here. So you can see here included are just one sample tax bill of a house with $265,000 value increased about 3,000. I will add the caveat that we were able to search and find these tax rates as they're proposed currently. We're in kind of that awkward time of year where a lot of these haven't been formally approved yet. So some of them could change, but the best we could find is shown here. You can see in this example, we are about 22% of the overall tax rate with the school district leading the way at 39% as well. So with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson for discussion and action on this item.
Nothing to add. The only thing I'd emphasize a little bit is that, you know, the city adopts its comprehensive rate of the seven two, but we're a part of the total tax rate that people ultimately see and we recognize that. But the city for our services is, you know, it depends obviously on which parcel, but between 25 and 30%. So what a total tax bill is, we're about a quarter to a third of the total rate. The rest goes to other taxing jurisdictions. So I think that's important always to emphasize. But this rate would support the budget that you just passed the first reading. Nothing to add, sir.
Hey, council added further comment or questions at this point?
Mayor, I just wanted to take this chance to thank staff for both the budget and for this tax. I know it was a ton of work. There's people in a lot of other cities right now that are getting hit with both the this tough economy and higher taxes. So I'm proud to be able to lower taxes for the people in Pearland and for all the efforts that went into making that possible. So appreciated and look forward to voting in favor of this proposal.
Mayor, if I may add something as well, just to add to what Clay said about the city's portion of the tax rate, of the tax, with total tax bill rather. I'd had a couple of conversations with some residents here recently, and we had this illustration I think is very, very helpful for a lot of people. For that 25% of the tax bill, you know, when you ask people really what they think government provides to them, you know, in more of a nebulous sense, what government provides. A lot of the things that they, they mention, you know, streets, paved streets and libraries and the fires, you know, department, police department, ambulance, you know, just like inspection services to keep their restaurants, you know, in compliance, things like that. All of these services that people generally mention that have a direct impact on their day to day life, our beautiful park systems and so forth, you know, those really are provided by the city. And so whenever you start writing those things down, generally like an overwhelming majority of the services that people identify with government providing them on their daily, in their daily lives, comes from municipal government, comes from the city services. So probably, you know, 75, 80% of the services that people can think of come from the city, but only 25% of their taxes go to support those services. So that's such a great illustration that's really opened my eyes and I think opened the eyes of a lot of residents. And I think it's a great point to make. And the fact that we're able to lower the tax rate this year just is even better. So thank you so much to, like Member Orlando said, to staff for putting this all together. And I think this is, this is going to be a good year for us to forget, move into next year and make things even better for everybody. I think you're doing a good job and let's make it even better. Thanks.
Right.
Mayor, I just again, thank staff for all the effort they put in. Particularly John McCarter for kind of jumping in halfway through the budget season and having to take over a large portion of responsibilities and finance director. So John, you're not allowed to leave. I don't care what the plans are. We'll pass a resolution forbid you from moving. I'll tell you why if I said so. So, but I know that you, everybody that works for you, Clay, everybody that works for you, put a lot of effort into this and to show that we can lower rates and improve services is a rarity. And it's a win for our citizens. Hopefully, we can keep that trend next year. And again, John, don't leave.
Any other question or comment from council?
Mayor, this is Woody. Hold on to your seat. Yeah, it is. I'm glad to see that. We went from a 74,1212 back down to a 72. I think that is very positive for what we're getting out of this budget session. So I appreciate all the effort that people have put into it on there. And you know, I love to see that rate go down. I mean, it's a tremendous benefit for the people in Pearland.
And what a lot of people don't realize is that we haven't built out our city yet. We're sitting in 60, about 60 square miles. And we've got a lot of land out there where people are living. We have food on waters, streets, sidewalks. And we're still building our little city, although we're the third largest by population in the Gulf Coast area. So the quality, I think that we're able to put into the city does something very positive. You're not going to be able to carry and pay for a growing city without house. You're not going to be able to carry and pay for a growing city without house tops. You've got to have some industrial and manufacturing support. And the ones we have over on Kirby Drive right now, low Kirby Drive District. Have said that the reason why they came to Pearland is because it's such a lovely town, it's well organized, it's cleanly taken care of. And it's, it, it's really something that if, if you get here and look at the tax rates, you say, well, I'm getting a dead gum, good bargain for most of my bucks. And I think, and I'm a taxpayer and I say that myself. So any other question or comment from counsel? There you go. Probably I wore them out, Madam Secretary. So motion second on the floor.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety-six.
Moving in our agenda to item number four, Councilmember Moore.
Your own. Mayor, consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number one, three, five, dash, two, zero. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thanks, Colonel. Transfer Mr. Carter to go through this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. One last time tonight, we'll skip the meeting date slide and get right into the fee update. So the purpose of this item is to, is for the first reading of the, the non-development fee ordinance. We've talked about each of these throughout the process, but just to rehash here on the first slide, our third slide rather. We see the changes to the, the parks membership. This is adding a student membership, both monthly and annual and resident and non-resident here. Next, we have our backflow prevention, assembly test, our BPAP report fee, forty dollars backflow prevention, assembly tester annual registration for a hundred dollars. Hydrant, hydrant meter cost recovery fee at fifty dollars and after hours processing fee for seventy-five dollars. All of these would be classified as a cost recovery fee for services or goods provided. Same thing on this slide here. We see our broken lock fee up at a hundred dollars that was amended from fifty pursuant to city council direction previously in this process. The new service fee is really just renaming that. And then the first time in subsequent processing fees at thirty dollars again amended from thirty dollars the first time fifty the second to just thirty dollars flat. Pursuant to city council direction prior in the process. Probably the largest and, and most notable fee change here is our change to our winter quarter average or WQA. In a nutshell, what we're doing here is establishing a ceiling rather than a set amount that each resident will pay for their winter quarter average. Historically, what has happened is you get your winter quarter average amount, and that's the amount that you pay regardless of whether you use more or less than that amount for your sewage. For new, new residents, we set that at set, we used to set that at twelve thousand gallons. Again, you'd pay that regardless of what your usage was. Now with this new update, that is a ceiling. So if you use less, you're going to pay less. If you use more, you're not going to pay more. So you'll be set at that winter quarter averages as your ceiling here. So looking at the water and sewer rates, you'll notice I did not mention a change to those rates prior because we are looking at a zero percent rate change here this year. Pretty boring slide here, just showing the two thousand and twenty compared to the two thousand and twenty-one rates. No change in, in any of these volume metric or base, commercial or residential. We do have a change here from the water and sewer bills for the winter quarter average change. And these are just meant to be illustrative, just picking out some usage levels and comparing them to a cap. At, at each one of the levels, you can see the change range from a dollar and fifty cents to thirty-three dollars here again, just illustrating what that potential impact could be to, to a set of sample customers. Here again, pretty boring where we pick out some, some sample customers and show the change in the, the rates themselves. Zero percent rate change. So we'll see a zero change here. In the actual rates themselves when usage is, is kept flat. Lastly, commercial here, you'll see no change there either. Do you want to show the, the slide comparing us to our neighboring entities, our, our sample cities around us, if you will, you hear, see us here with a combined bill of seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents for the six thousand gallon user. More or less in the center here compared to those within our region. And you can see current to proposed remaining flat because there is no change with the, with the rates for this fiscal year. So with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson. We'll have discussion and action on the, the fee item.
Nothing to add, sir. Thank you.
Counsel, have any question or comment based on the discussion we have so far? About water. I don't hear the counsel pop that up, Madam Secretary.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number thirteen fifty-eight dash twenty.
Moving in our agenda to item number five, that's member Perez. It's you here. Maybe handle this one for us.
Of course, Mayor. One second. Let me catch up to that item. Not on our screen. So pull it up on my agenda. Consideration possible action resolution R two thousand and twenty dash one seventy-eight. So moved.
Second, Little.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a procedural requirement. We should thank and salute Member Hernandez. He's been involved with the National League of Cities and become a leader there and recognized. And they've asked him to serve as, in a leadership role there. So he'll be able to, to not only learn things there, but share some of our Pearland examples. But as part of that requirement, they require the council concurrence with him doing that. So nothing to add, sir.
But when you look at, at local and national organizations pertaining to cities and counties. And we've got one local here with Houston County, Southern County, and the coastal Missouri County cities. The National League of Cities is a fabulous, fabulously recognized and it's a very prestigious city. Government advisors and work with. And it brings together all of the parts of our players across the nation. And I'm delighted that Adrian is interested in serving in that position. And I'd like to support him and continue his opportunity. And if it happens, we'll catch you on television there once in a while. And read about you in the paper once in a while too, when you're doing anything good. So. So. Counsel, there's the council having comments on this before we open it up to the city.
Well, I hate to say anything positive about Adrian, but.
Mayor, if I could, just because this is an item with pretending to me personally, I, I will step out for the remainder of the discussion. So just wanted to step away, but thank you so much for your kind words, Mayor.
Yes. Staff having reports to start off with?
No, sir. I, I mean, I would just point out to me, Member Hernandez is stepping away, but you know, it's not compensated. It's a volunteer thing. So he's, he's doing this as a representative of the city to, in that role. So like, like you do mayor to set a good example with HJC and other leadership roles. This is something we do as part of our participation and, and learning across the country.
Counsel, have any question or comments from Adrian at this point?
Mayor, I, I, I think this would be a very good. I think Adrian was, is a good candidate for that. And, and I think he'd be a very good individual to put on that.
I think I could use a little Pearland support to help make sure we go some national issues resolved in a proper fashion. Any other question or comment from counsel?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess a question regards to budget. I look in the, the agenda right up, but it sounds like the city is responsible for all the travel. Is that true? And how do we have that budgeted?
Sure. So there, there's a, a budget for that and the, obviously that has been reduced. But yeah, we and he'll have to figure that out if it fits within there and he'll have to make decisions about what he can participate or not. So. But it, it is, would be on, you know, him and, and up to the budget amount. Through next October, because the memberships run from, I think, September to September, something like that. So.
Uh huh. I believe it is. Yeah.
So what you're saying, it's budgeted already?
No, yeah, I mean, we've got, I mean, you, you adopt a fun budget, but you know, the, the, as we just went through the council allocation. So thought to be some choices made, you know, we'll sort that out with you all during the year about, I guess the good thing is that T, TML is going virtual. So there's a smaller rate for that. So even with a smaller budget, you know, we'll be able to do some things, but not everything. But even some of this stuff that's coming up, you know, that, that'll probably be large part virtual as well. So, you know, that'll be part of that.
Uh huh. I believe the National League of Cities is going virtual as well.
Thanks, Member Carbone Perez.
I think it's a worthy expense. Well, this is a, something that came up now and wasn't budgeted before. I'm sure we can move something around, particularly with council budget. I don't, I don't see any, any issue with this.
We know Pearland represents a unique and special city and of coast area and in Texas. And I think this, I think the nation will have opportunity to benefit of having one of our guys in the national, in the National League of City area. And they cover the whole nation. They're good. They influence greatly the, some of the activities of the Congress. And it's as much, probably more than most of us can. So. Unless the council have any further questions, I would like to tell our city secretary, motion second on the floor.
Member Perez? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando? Member Orlando? Member Carbone? Member Little?
As much as it pains me, aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one seven eight.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be good to get him out of town for a while.
Yeah, it'd been seven to zero, Adrian, if you'd voted, but you can't do that. Let's move down to item number seven. And let the council member Owens lead the parade here for a little bit.
We're on, we're on number six, Mayor.
Number six?
I mean, I'm sorry, Owens is number six. Yeah, sorry about that.
Consideration possible action first and only reading ordinance number fifteen ninety-seven. I so moved.
We have motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this time it's been perk laden and trying to be understood, but this is a first and only reading. So it will require a, a three quarters vote of six, I believe, to affirm. But this is an ordinance that would amend our pay plan and provide for a, a position pay for our field super staff, frontline staff that have been involved. And the idea is to try to create this that we'd be able to pay a stipend to our frontline staff workers that have not been able to work remote during the COVID emergency. And had to continue, whether it be police, fire, public works, operations, some parks operations throughout this. This, as we've gotten into this and trying to understand it and the requirements, it is forward looking. We can't look back and try to do something retroactively. And so this involves setting up a period for these positions that, you know, it may, may not be perfect, but trying to sort through all this of positions that have three different tiers of, of, of exposure, if you will, out there and just provide some recognition and thanks through this pay supplement. It's a one-time, it'd only be for the positions that were stated in the ordinance. And we need to get this up and running and, and in place so we can implement this. And importantly, this would be reimbursed and is reimbursable by that Texas CARES Act that we've been talking about. And so the city would be reimbursed for this, thanks to that, to the staff. So again, we've tried to design this to capture as many of the positions that have been in those kinds of situations. And I want to add my thanks for everybody that's done such a great job for this to carry on the operations, whether seen or unseen. You know, the, the fire EMS have been responding to calls and picking up people that, you know, sometimes we find out afterwards that have COVID virus. Also, some of the other staff been involved in, you know, just keeping the water and wastewater systems running. And, you know, so that we can wash our hands and we're staying at home and all that. So it's not been easy. We've all had to adapt. And this is a way that we can give them a little bit of thanks with this quote unquote hazard pay provision. Nothing to add, sir.
Counsel, have any question or comment based on the staff report?
Good morning. Wow, this is for Clay. Clay, how much do we have in that CARES Act?
The, the total CARES Act was on the order magnitude of, you know, six million dollars, but the budget we, we shared with you all. And from the beginning, we said that there's this provision that allowed for this recognition. It has come up a little bit as we've gotten into it. And this particular provision, we estimate with the hundred and forty titles. That's, you know, a lot more than that, like four, five hundred people would be on the order magnitude, I think, like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
This is a, a one-time deal, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. And, and that was part of the consideration previously that, that we had talked about. You know, the police, fire and EMS. I mean, you know, they, they can't work from home. And they have to be out in the community. And I think, you know, that and the public works, people in some of those areas there. So I think this is a good thing to do to compensate them for that, that, those dollars for the activities that they've done over this period of time so far.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Our, our city is able to keep on running because of the first responders and other frontline workers who aren't able to do their jobs on Zoom like, like we are here. So I'm glad we're able to show our appreciation and appreciate putting this together.
There you go. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second here.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando? Member Carbone? Member Little? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety-seven.
Again, our agenda item seven, that's member Orlando. Two handles for us.
All right, Mayor, consideration and possible action on resolution number R twenty twenty dash one five six. So moved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second for us.
Okay, got a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So Mayor and Council, as part of the two thousand and nineteen voter approved bond issue, part of that was to make investment, investments in our existing park system. One of the priorities that's been identified is for the trails within those, the walking paths. Where you use a crushed granite compound that just gets compacted and used to replace those. So they only have so many years in them. And so this contract, as the memorandum outlines, would replace them at three separate parks. And for the three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it's listed here. Nothing to add. And, uh, for the three hundred forty five thousand dollars, it's, uh, listed here. Nothing to add.
Council, any question or comment based on our staff report on this item?
Mayor, just a couple, um, looking through this, is this, uh, was this competitive sale proposal or lowest responsible bidder?
Uh, Trent, you want to talk to that and what the rationale was on that, please, or?
Okay.
It is lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. And then looking through the the budget, um, looks like future expenditures. Is there any, are we budgeting anything for construction management or inspection? I don't see anything.
Now, we've got this one scheduled to do the construction management inspection with our in-house folks, our inspectors and our construction managers in the, in the engineering department.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Question or comment? Here you none. Uh, Madam Secretary, we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Member Orlando.
Right.
Member Carbone. Member Carbone. Member Little.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens. The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one five six.
Moving to agenda item number eight, Councilman Robert Carbone, did you do the order on that?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R twenty twenty dash one five five. So move. Second, Little.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So, uh, Mayor Council, this is a design contract for a major, uh, trail effort. Uh, this has been bookended by other trail improvements, uh, some of the developers have put in, um, as part of the overall system on the Clear Creek Trail Project. And this is the section from the town ditch up to, uh, Powne Parkway, uh, just off the University Houston Clear Lake Campus, uh, there. So went through on the professional services and gauge engineering, and they've got, uh, relationships with, uh, not only flood control, but, uh, done this kind of work. And so, uh, recommending them for as the best, uh, experts for designing this for us. Nothing to add.
Good. Also, any question or comment based on staff report?
Mayor, this is what I have. The only thing I've got, um, this canal, uh, connecting of the trail there, uh, you know, I think it's okay. But the thing about it, if you look at the green tea area, I've walked that trail several times. There's no place to park. I mean, you know, we we got a trail that we paid a few million dollars for, but you got a parking area over there that may park, uh, four or five people, you know, four or five cars. And that's all, you know, to, uh, to be able to get on that trail as it is. You know, I I think, you know, something needs to be done to increase that. And if you, uh, look at the, uh, area over here close to, uh, the bank and everything, they got that blocked off. You can't park there to walk the trail. And so we're not able to let anybody in there. There's no place to park vehicles. And I don't know if this opens something up, you know, maybe park down to U of H or whatever, uh, on to do that. But there's no place for anybody to get on and walk these trails that we're putting there.
Uh, I'll let Trent add some more onto the whole vision for that, but, you know, I'm glad that the trails are being used so heavily. I mean, uh, what's been built is, uh, very much appreciated. And, uh, you know, uh, if there's some, you know, some lining to all this, uh, you know, people are getting out and using the the system. Um, so I'm glad there's a lot of demand for that. Um, the particular block that you mentioned, uh, you know, that was not ever meant to be an end all be all. Uh, you know, we're trying to work out some, uh, cooperations with the adjoining, uh, shopping retail. Uh, but in large part, you know, these are going to be for residents in the area that can, uh, uh, park, drive on, or I'm sorry, bike on the streets and and other systems, but the longer you extend it, the more opportunities you have for people just to get on to it from, you know, their own homes. But, uh, you know, a point taken about the the parking component and, uh, understand about that. Trent, you want to address a little more about the vision for that and, you know, whether it be U H C L or other places?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pearson and, uh, Gideonian Council and Mayor. Uh, member Owens, uh, yes, we're looking at some additional places to add parking. Um, of course, we've got some, some spots designated, I believe, in the Lowe's parking lot. We're talking to other retailers and and once we extend it to U of H Clear Lake Pearland Campus, we'll, we've also had some initial conversations. We'll have more conversations with them about the ability to, uh, have some designated spaces there. And then we do have a little bit of money in this trail fund that we're also going to look for some additional spaces, um, along the Pearland Parkway corridor. And then, of course, as we tie it into, um, some of the regional parks, um, El Franco Lee Park, as well as when we get it tied into, um, Independence Park and the rest of our park system, we'll have additional opportunities for parking.
Yes, Trent, it's a, it's a nice walk over there. I mean, wife and I have done it several times, but but the thing about it, you know, we were able to get in to find a place to park. But over there, passive treatment plant, you know, if you look on the backside of that on Clear Creek over there, there's some area there that used to be a picnic area. And I'm sure the mayor remembers having that city picnics back there. It's got the concrete tables and all of that. I don't know if there's something we might be able to use that off of Hughes Road in there as, uh, something for a parking area. Yeah, I don't know.
You know, we're standing that plant there so we can, you know, take a look at what the plant expansion, if there's any opportunities there. Um, but, uh, you know, I think throughout the system, we're looking for these opportunities. Another one is where where this, these trails actually through the Highland Glen Trails connect to the trail, uh, at Old Alvin that goes over to thirty five. We're looking at at our, uh, Orange Street Service Center that we would have a few parking spaces there. So we're, you know, we're looking comprehensively at the trail system and where we can potentially put the parking, uh, as we expand that system.
Yeah, I'm getting voters on a place to stop and rest every once in a while. Okay, all right. Thank you. Just the councilman Little, and I've used the trail quite a bit riding my bike and they're, the trail pretty extensively used. And, um, I know I've ridden with some large groups and we park in the Lowe's parking lot and hasn't been any problem there. But, uh, it is good to see that, um, the trails are getting used and primarily from the neighborhoods that are are next to or adjacent to the trails. So, um, but I agree, there could be some more parking.
Well, there's something we can work on, I'll tell you. Any other comment by council at this point?
Uh, yes, Mayor, a couple of things, uh, with respect to the Lowe's parking, uh, do we have connectivity from all the way from Lowe's up to the parking, uh, facility that's just south of the, uh, the new pedestrian bridge that we we built? I believe there's, there's, uh, there's gaps there, correct?
No, there's no gaps. You can go all the way from the Lowe's parking lot all the way to the bridge.
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
It it connects through the, uh, the trail system that was developed by the subdivision there along, uh, Province Village Drive. Yes, sir.
Yeah, they got that, uh, chain blocked off that area up there. They won't let you park inside that area.
Uh, fair enough. Um, so if we're connected there, I think that that's pretty much our parking problem or that solves a good chunk of our parking problem because we know Lowe's is over parked and we have, um, kind of a deficiency in spaces in that one, uh, in that one location. We're probably the most we can, we can fit there. Um, a couple of questions with respect to design and permitting. Uh, so north of the creek, that's, uh, City of Houston. So have we already reached out to the City of Houston and, um, discussed, um, the, that our, our request to, uh, build within there or what, even though it's our road that we build, it's their right of way? Um, have we already had some initial conversations with them?
Uh, you're speaking of peace along, uh, Pearland Parkway?
Well, pretty much anything, yes, sir, and pretty much anything north of the creek is going to be City of Houston jurisdiction.
Uh, well, along the creek is actually going to be flood control, uh, jurisdiction. We're looking to work with flood control to be within their, their, uh, drainage rightways, drainage easements and those sort of things. Uh, we've also coordinated with Harris County Precinct One, uh, on on the overall trail plan, uh, for not only this segment of Clear Creek, but all the way to the west side of town, the connections there, because a lot of that is in the in Precinct One. And then we have, uh, had contact with City Houston for the stuff north of, uh, north of there as well and and Pearland Parkway.
Uh, the one thing I would bring, uh, hopefully maybe, uh, make the connection, what we've got, we've got a dead ending right now to the south end of that development that Reiki put together, uh, but that that south end is a car wash. Obviously, that's not a logical place for the trail to end. Um, I don't know if there's logic in us at least looking at in the design and at all for us to continue that all the way, maybe to the water burner, uh, because that would then connect to the overall, um, shopping area. If that's the idea, maybe we could park there and then continue down or vice versa. Or there could be, um, some, uh, some hiking up into that area for people to shop, come to eat and come back, um, as a, as a multimodal form of transportation. Uh, I just don't think stopping at the, uh, the Blue Wave Car Wash is going to be the most logical choice for us, uh, for two reasons. One, there's, it's not a good place for us to park and it's it's not a destination. Um, so, uh, if we could include that possibly in the time. The other thing is the proposed bridge, um,
What happened?
I'd like to see if there is, uh, you, if we can potentially eliminate that bridge. It's going to be a cost, um, and it's going to be a permitting delay. I don't know if there is, um, some connectivity that we could have beneath the bridge at Clear Creek. Um, that could possibly save us, uh, the expense of that bridge. Um, you know, I just, I I could be wrong, you know, I'm not a big, uh, I I I haven't, uh, biked this trail as much as, uh, member Little has. But I don't, the bridge would be, uh, a substantial cost to this project. Um, and I think if we could eliminate the bridge and, uh, build more trail, I'd much prefer to do that. Unless there is some design aspect that says this is a, it's a, it's a necessity to have, uh, the bridge connection there. Um,
Can interrupt. I mean, uh, you know, this, keep in mind, this is a a grant project and, uh, it's already been vetted out. So as far as extending it to other areas, you know, that'd be on our dime for construction. We'll ask. Uh, but even the, uh, you know, the bridge and so forth, that's all been scoped out as part of that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Trent, but I think we'd run some challenges if we're trying to get too far off of that.
The the bridge is part of the advanced funding agreement, is part of the overall scope. Uh, and then I think one of the other things we did is we did, uh, uh, working with, um, flood control, as well as working with H G A C and Tech dot. Uh, we relocated where that bridge will be, um, into the, the, uh, segment of Clear Creek that will not be as wide as some of the segments south of where that's planned. Uh, if we had kept it where it originally was, I think it would have been five hundred to seven hundred, potentially feet long for the crossing. And we've got it in an area that's much narrower than that and making it much more, uh, cost effective. But I think, you know, providing that, uh, that tie in back to the Highland, uh, like the Highland system and getting over to the, uh, El Franco Lee tie in with their trail system in their part, um, we really need that, that, uh, crossing in that general area of what it's planned for.
Okay. Uh, well, if we're locked into it, then, uh, then, um, uh, I guess it is what it is, then at least let us just take a look at if it's a possibility, let's extend the trail further north.
Yes, absolutely. I think the intention there was to get it to a good logical term and I.
Yeah, I I don't know how how likely it is or how soon that track would develop north of, uh, the Blue Wave and and they would be required to put sidewalk going per City Houston criteria, but, um, I I don't think we we should wait on that. We built the road for them, might as well just build the sidewalk.
Well, you know, we're we're paying for twenty percent of this, so there's eighty percent of it coming from the ground, which.
There you go. Then they at least we get to contribute something. So, um, that's all I have. Thank you, Trent.
Yes, sir. Any other comment from council at this point?
Yeah, just quickly, Mayor, it's kind of a re-upping member president comments and and the comments that I seem to make every are discussing these, you know, appreciate this time and the P A C P L and the park system. I I think that's great. Um, to the extent that we can connect this, not just to people's houses, but the places that they're going, even outside of just parks. I, you know, fully appreciate how, uh, logistically difficult this could be and expensive, but just as they can into A T E, I I think that would be a huge game changer in terms of how many people are using it, just going to pick up a few groceries on their bike versus trying to make it across Pearland Parkway, uh, at rush hour. So just, uh, as we continue to develop this, I I think that's be the top priority in order to increase people using it and actually make a impact as many people's quality of life as possible.
Uh huh, that's great.
And then actually, in the last segment, we built the one that's got the the trailhead and parking lot we talked about on, uh, Pearland Parkway near the pedestrian bridge. Uh, we did rebuild some of the sidewalk there along Pearland Parkway to come back south towards the retail center there. So we'll continue to look for those opportunities and make those better and improved connections to, you know, not just, uh, subdivisions, but, uh, points of interest and places of interest and retail, uh, shopping and those sort of things.
That's a labor of a point, but if we look at them, um, at a large bond expense or a large sidewalk expenditure as part of a bond program, uh, later this decade, that those kind of things can be, that can be included. Uh, you know, we got to hit that, hit while the iron's hot, strike while the iron's hot with this if we've got, um, if we've got matching funds, as significant as that. Uh, but I think identifying all of those gaps would be beneficial to the citizenry.
No. And I love the way some of the citizens and organizations in the Houston, in the Pearland area are chipping in to help make this thing happen. There's a, I think it's the Sam Houston Trails up in, up in Harris County that we're trying to contact Pearland a number of years ago to try to see if they couldn't have a partnership arrangement where their trail could run into Pearland and Pearland could run into, oh, not to Fort Ben County and so forth. So it's something I think it's, it's, uh, I think it's a grand, something that when when you talk about Pearland, it's, you're going to have this wonderful trail that, uh, that everybody is envious of. Any other question or comment from council at this point, from the staff at this point?
Yeah, Mayor, just, uh, real quick, uh, I'm glad we're getting eighty percent of this funded because this is eleven million dollars for a trail. And, um, I don't know, when I was growing up, a trail was a trail. You go make one, uh, take a machete or or whatever you need to do to clear a path. And I I just, I I know that the bureaucracy won't let us do this, but all these, these places that we need to connect and extend to, um, there's guys that go out there in four wheeler, all that, they're making their own trails. So I guess it's just frustrating seeing how much we're spending, um, to to put damn near a road and, um, out here called a trail when for maybe tenth of the cost, we could go through and actually, uh, people could use it. Um, so I I don't know, just just frustrating the big scope of things that, that, uh, that we're spending eleven million dollars on one, one smaller portion of a trail system. Whereas I think if, if we didn't have such high standards we're forced to go to, we could connect it all within a few months, but.
Well, I I I'd just say, we're having a paved trail system is probably one of the things. It it it's got to be paved or it's otherwise it's just a maintenance issue long term. It becomes overgrowth. We could put, uh, decomposed granite or some other alternative material there for significantly cheaper. But you still got to grade it. You still got to create the alignment. There's a lot of work in there. You'll save some money, but I don't think you're you're looking at the kind of savings that, um, that you're looking at. And I, to me, honestly, with some of those guys that get on a four wheeler, they're making a trail through areas that I wouldn't want to put a bike through or wouldn't want to walk through. Uh, so I don't think it's necessarily, uh, an equivalent. And and we're also getting eighty percent of this funded by an outside agency, so it's not eleven million dollars to us. Uh, so it's taxpayers' money, but not all Pearland. Um, we've done this study. This is something that the the citizens have told us routinely that they want, they want to connect the trail. Um, as member Little said, I I've never been along that trail or on that trail without seeing, uh, people using it. So, um, you know, maybe it's, it's not pulling cars off of our road, but it's certainly being used and the citizens want it. And certainly it's a little more expensive, uh, but, um, uh, but I think it's a value that community, the citizens have routinely told us to want it.
I agree with you all that.
But Tony, if you want to volunteer a weekend and go out with a machete, I'll join you. Let's do it.
Yeah. I bet the cities, you know that we can brag it. We've got a trail working here. What do you got our guys over there doing? Machete, maybe? Any other question or comment by council at this point?
Oh, I think we just trail out, Mayor.
I think we've done pretty good. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor here.
Member Carbone.
He's taking. Hi.
Member Little. Member Hernandez.
Hi.
Member Moore.
Hi.
Member Perez.
For chance to walk to Water Burger, aye.
Member Orlando. The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one five five.
Moving in our agenda item number nine, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2020 dash one six four, so moved.
More.
We have a motion and a second we're in discussion. Staff report.
Mayor, this is, uh, something we're very, uh, pleased to be bringing forward and that's, uh, for a, a major investment in existing neighborhood. Mimosa Acres area, uh, drainage, uh, road improvements, all, uh, coming together. Uh, and the scenario that we've had repetitive losses, uh, and, uh, you know, drainage problems, a scenario that, uh, through no fault of, uh, ours, you know, is built before current standards and, and, uh, so we're retrofitting that. Um, you know, the new areas for all the growth and development that Pearland has enjoyed. I've held up well with those new standards and so we're able to make this investment. This is part of again, the 2019, uh, bond issue and, and drainage work that's been prioritized. And, uh, so been through an extensive, uh, engineering effort and lift to, uh, study this. And, uh, as we say, uh, you know, this isn't, uh, foolproof for all situations, but this will, uh, make, uh, substantial improvements into that area and, uh, very pleased that we'll be able to do this for, uh, some of our existing Pearland residents. So nothing to add there.
Good, good. Our city mayor just told us a good story there that is going to make a whole subdivision very happy. And, uh, we, we're happy, looking forward to that. Council, any question or comment from council, from staff report? Other than that, it's going to make a bunch of people happy in this subdivision.
Mayor, I got a, a quick question. Um, in, in regards to this contract, kind of similar questions. This was lowest responsible bidder, correct? Okay. And then management, uh, construction management and inspection, um, I, I didn't see anything budget. We're gonna do that in-house as well?
I believe our, uh, in-house staff has the capacity to take this one on as well.
Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you.
Good. Any other question or comment from council? Madam Secretary, I'm gonna keep you busy here. Most second, most second on the floor.
Member Little. Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one six four.
Moving to agenda item number 10, Hernandez, before you go on with the national leaders.
Thank you, mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number one, five, nine, eight. So moved.
Good. This more. Second. Mayor, before we, before we move into staff report, this is a, uh, a piece of property I, I have advised on. So I think, uh, to, for the, um, uh, for the benefit of the citizenry, it's not something that I should vote on. So I'm going to sit this one out.
I think that's appropriate and thank you for doing that.
It'll make a lot of people happy.
Would you make, we, you know, do you see council, any questions or comments by, based on staff report?
Uh, sorry, could introduce this, this is a, uh, something for council consideration requires an ordinance. Um, and the, uh, uh, process here, uh, the, the applicants, so the owners of this property are going to be seeking an amendment to the Southern Trails Plan Development. Um, obviously that's a large area, number of parcels, uh, typically they would, uh, be required to, uh, make notice to the individuals, uh, in there that, uh, because they bought into this plan development that, uh, they'd have to make, uh, that they're seeking a change in that, that would, they should be aware of. Um, we have created this ordinance and alternate notice type, uh, provision. And that's discretionary on you, whether you want to allow them to, uh, exercise that or not. Uh, but they would be able to advertise in the papers and do some other things that would, uh, uh, skip over the individual notices. So it's your discretion whether that's sufficient, uh, for what they, they will be going through the process for. Uh, so this is the parcel in front of Shadow Creek, uh, high school there on the south side of Broadway. And, uh, uh, because of the requirements for the notice, uh, this would require, and Darren could correct me, uh, five members to affirm whether you have anybody sitting out or not. Uh, it still requires five, uh, because the nature of this, uh, you're, you're, uh, provide this alternative measures. So.
That is correct. That's a requirement of a local government code, which is also and, uh, adopted as part of our U D C. So it does require two thirds vote of the entire council regardless. Present or not, so we will need five votes to approve this.
I agree. Is there other question or comment from council?
Yes, mayor, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if, uh, I'm not sure if the applicant's on the line, but I'm just trying to understand exactly what the change that's being sought is that we're notifying the, uh, the residents about.
I don't throw on, but maybe, uh, in the meantime, if John McCarter, McDonald or somebody could talk to that a little bit, uh, and just to keep clear, and if I didn't make this clear, so this would be set in the process for what they ultimately want to ask. But understand you're asking what they're going to be asking for. So McDonald, are you on there?
Any other question or?
Sorry, we haven't answered that for him. Um, apologize. Is it available to talk to that?
I believe, I believe Martin Griggs has his hand up and he's.
Clark, Martin, you're unmuted. Clark, Martin. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, thank you for, uh, taking consideration on this. Um, to answer your question, council member, uh, the proposed amendment, uh, that B L Dodd, uh, the property owner is seeking is to allow the additional use of a drive-through uh, with the retail businesses. Um, initially when they did their land planning, uh, for the commercial portion of the property, um, that was in a pre-COVID, uh, environment. They're now realizing that if they, uh, would like to have, uh, a restaurant use, uh, with the commercial development, that having a drive-through element, uh, is severely beneficial to their, uh, to their cause.
Understood. So I, I just, uh, went back and watched some of the tape to refresh myself on this. And the initial proposal was for a gymnastics and tumbling facility. Uh, and then there would be an office use. I, it was said that the gymnastics facility would be the highest traffic. The other, uh, things would be, you know, more of office buildings and there are a lot of restrictions in place. Uh, additional restrictions in place for things like drive-through. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that the intention was still, uh, that the lion's share of the property was still planning to be used for that gymnastics facility, uh, and not just something entirely different than what was discussed, uh, when this came up in January.
Uh, to answer that, council, councilman Orlando, uh, the gymnastics facility is still a large portion of the development. Um, I believe it's about, uh, a third to a half of it, um, off the top of my head, but, um, this is primarily for the our persons.
Gotcha. So this, this would not be replacing that gymnastics facility then with retail or, or drive-throughs or anything like that?
That would be correct, sir.
Okay. And then again, just to the main point, we're going to consider all this, this is just on the notification.
Correct. This is just for the notifications. That way, uh, staff isn't sending out 1,200 plus notices to all of the residents. You may not be, uh, anywhere around here.
Right. There's just a lot of discussion of it last time about the traffic and specifically I think people didn't want to see something like a drive-through. So, um, I, I think that's going to affect my decision making, just the number of people who I think will see this as a, a little bit of a thing to wait, understand the, the COVID, uh, change certainly, but, um, definitely hear this is an input there as it was, uh, you know, I got a lot of people reaching out when that first came up. So thank you for the clarification.
This is councilman Little. Is there any way we can pass the cost of these notices, the publication all to the applicant, the developers?
Uh, council member Little, that would take an amendment to our fee schedule. Um, and, or at least as far as I'm aware, uh, and currently, uh, we have not set, uh, that as a means to pass the, um, the, the cost of that notification back on to the proposed developer.
Maybe we should consider that as a future item to, to discuss if it's benefiting them and it's for burdens of the city. I think they should absorb the cost.
Second.
Member Little, I, I would suggest that that's, uh, more standard than not. I mean, if, if the developer, the property owner, you know, wants to change something and, you know, the rest of the city and everybody else shouldn't be paying for the, uh, notifications that are required to let people know about that. So.
No.
Is there the comment or questions at this point? I don't see. I think it's sort of kind of fuzzy like, but the Madam Secretary, let's take a vote on it here.
Member Hernandez. Member Hernandez.
I'm so, I'm sorry. I, so, uh, to member Little's question, this is something that the, um, that the city will be paying for or the increased notices?
Yeah, apparently, I mean, I, first off, I would, I would not look at it as, uh, you know, the dollars and cents are what they are. And, uh, you know, what's, uh, you know, what's, what's important for the notice in this situation in terms of, you know, what people may or may not have known with a P D and what can be used there. And as, uh, was stated, uh, the original dance studio was not, um, envisioned with the P D. But, you know, was seen as sort of low intrusive and not something of a retail. Um, you know, I didn't realize that the, uh, COVID was being used as a, uh, quote unquote excuse for this. Cause you know, uh, uh, development, all that stands forever. And I don't know if that's the reason. So, uh, but yeah, apparently they'd be on these expense to, to underwrite that, but I think it's probably larger implications than just that.
Member Hernandez.
Okay. Yeah. So I think to that point, I guess, um, I, I, I would be more in favor of, uh, of just increasing the, the visibility of the notice. So I'm, I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Member Moore.
We're voting?
Yes, sir.
No.
Member Perez.
He has seen.
Sitting out.
That's right. Member Owens.
No.
Member Orlando.
No.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little. The motion fails. Five to one.
To our agenda item number 11, council member Moore. That you wind up this, you business section.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R two zero two zero dash one seven zero, so moved.
We have a motion and a second we're in discussion, staff report.
So mayor council, this is, uh, as we alluded to and said, uh, not, not alluded to, we stated, uh, with the change in the, uh, approach for the 288, uh, beautification work, uh, P D C and others are underwriting. Um, we're going to, uh, there's other costs that are involved with that. And, uh, so this amendment takes care of part of that, uh, some amendments from existing contracts with, uh, Clark Condon. And, uh, you know, as alluded to or, or said, I'm sorry for saying that all the time. It, it was said, uh, how, uh, other, uh, some more straightforward projects, the trail, the, the granite trail, uh, one thing. And then the, uh, other item was being handled for a construction inspection. There are costs from that. And, uh, those are accounted for and paid, uh, from the project. So Trent, maybe you can, uh, amplify on that a little bit, please.
Okay. Council, any question or comment based on our staff report?
Yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit more. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Emerson. So, um, yeah, we, in, in the last time we had this item in front of you, um, we laid out the additional cost of, uh, preparing the plans for the, uh, lowest responsible bidder. And then, uh, the other cost of, of having to bring on construction management inspection. And, um, you know, wh- where we are with our in-house is that we've basically got them scheduled and occupied with all of the other projects. Uh, or many of the other projects, of course, on the advanced funding agreement projects, road projects and major plant projects. We bring in outside help like, uh, is recommended for this project. Um, and, um, you know, those costs were laid out for you in the previous, uh, um, discussion on this item. And, um, just, uh, just so there's full understanding and when we do do it in-house, uh, we have those same costs. Um, they're at our own rates and our own employees' rates. Uh, but we do for pay for those costs out of the, uh, out of the bond projects, um, when we assign our internal staff to be the construction managers and construction inspectors on those projects.
So beyond that, uh, nothing to add, mayor. Uh, thank you.
Okay. Does this, council lady question or comment based on, uh, Mr. Emerson's comments? From staff?
Yep. Thank you, mayor. It's kind of like staff was trying to answer a question before I asked it. Um, I, I guess, yeah, listening to the E D C discussions, when I took up this issue again, um, it, it, it solidified my decision from last time. There, some of the E D C board members are still confused over, over the bidding process on the competitive seal proposal and how it was presented to them and the city council. So, um, we're headed down the right direction. Now it just feels like, um, that, that staff and consultants and everybody's going to work their damnedest to make sure that this project still is really expensive. Um, it's interesting that we're already sketching out almost a half million for construction management. And we don't even know who the lowest responsible bidder is. Um, so I guess I would ask, let's let the process run. And, and let's not go ahead and, and, and spend half a million dollars in construction management when we don't even know who that lowest responsible bidder is. It could be the, the golden child, Milis and Shooter Lindsay coming back, um, or, or not. So I, I think we're getting ahead, our head of ourselves here and in terms of the change orders, um, and kind of what we're, we're saying the $77,000 difference is, I, I'm not, I'm not impressed that this wasn't included to begin with, and we had to go through this whole process to figure out that hydro mulching and phasing in would save some dollars. Um, so that, that's going to be why I'm voting no tonight.
Hmm. Any other question or comment for council? Perez?
Uh, yeah, uh, as much as I, uh, hate to disagree with, uh, member Carbone, I just think, I, I think we're on the right path. Um, and I think that, uh, when you, when you change course on how it's bid, or if we're going to provide additional, uh, additional direction on rebidding this, uh, we're going to lean on our consultants to provide some additional, um, uh, so the additional service. Now, does that, do I think that that definitively equates out to $77,000? You know, I, I don't know. I have to take a look at what they're, uh, what they're looking at as far as a, um, amount of our fee estimate. Um, but, um, I'll trust their word, uh, that that's a, it's a fair assessment. Um, I think if we, if we spend 77, uh, get a new bid and we can show that we saved money or we can feel more comfortable that, uh, we're getting the best value, uh, for the project, uh, and relieve ourselves of the concerns we had with the competitive seal proposal with some, um, uh, with some adults that weren't bid out, um, I, I'm comfortable with that. Um, you know, we're, we are, we're going to spend a half million dollars in construction management regardless. That was in, I believe that was included in the original, um, uh, in, in the original scope. It's just a, an additional, uh, 77 for them to go back and manage a rebid.
Well, member Perez, if I could, uh, clarify the 77, so there's, there's 15 of that, um, that goes towards updating the construction documents to take us from what was put together originally to update, to include, um, the alternate items. And then also to bring the, the plans up to, to today's, what is out there. Cause of course, when these plans were put together in first bid, it's a, you know, there's a construction project out there with the 288 coal land. So things have changed and so we'll, uh, be able to update the plans to. we'll be able to update the plans to what's out there today. So there's $15,000 in there for that. There's actually 10,000 in there for managing the the rebids and going through that process. And then the other 52,000 is actually for construction administration. And Matt can probably explain this a little better than I can. But the original contract with Clark Condon contemplated fewer bid packages than where we are today. This is split up into the multiple of the five phases, I believe it is. And so by splitting that up, we actually got into, you know, we used up more of the construction administration earlier. And so we're going to use what's remaining in the contract of construction administrative services. And then we've got to add some more because we've added additional bid packages or actual construction, you know, and contracts to do the construction administration for. So those are the things that make up the 77,000. So really, there's only 25,000 of that associated with the with rebidding.
Fair enough. And Matt, look, I I trust you and Robert's team betted this pretty carefully. And I think that, you know, provided the new direction that it's worthy that we pay the consultants for some additional work. And based on the scope you've described right up, I I'm comfortable moving forward with it. I'd like us to go ahead and personally, I'd like us to approve this so we have less delays associated with getting this lowest responsible bid out to the street, get the bid in, get the project moving, as opposed to banging around for some relatively small dollars on the overall contract and delaying things even further.
We're seeing good bids right now. So I think the sooner we get it out, the better. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think and I don't think that's going to last much longer. So if we spend this out past past the fall, we're going to stop seeing the the bid market that we have right now. And we could end up losing out on the advantage that that this this current market is giving us. So I wouldn't want to teeter around for 77 grand and lose out on a competitive bid market.
This is counsel little. It seems in the years I've been on council that the amount of money we're spending on construction management services is is very significantly increased. Has there ever been any thought to increasing the number of engineers by a couple in our city that have constructive management experience that can do this in-house? I mean, we've got to be spending well into six figures a year on construction management services.
Yes, sir. We have spent a lot on that. And I believe we're probably spending less now than we have in the past because over multiple years, we we have brought on two construction managers that we didn't have, probably as recent as three or four years ago. So those are, we've brought them on board. And of course, we've always had our engineering infrastructure inspectors. And with with development, not as as at a rapid pace as it was a few years ago, we've been able to then employ our in-house construction inspectors as well for that. So I think we're probably spending less now than we had in the past, at least kind of on per project. Or it's not spending less. I mean, we're actually, we spend the money on our in-house personnel. We pay for them out of those projects. But, you know, we're able to do a lot more in-house than we had been able to previously. And so, you know, I think the, you know, the concern there is how far do you ramp that up? And can you sustain that based on the the number of projects we actually have to assign people to? And then there's other projects like the the projects where we have advanced funding agreements with tech stop for road projects. That's so involved with the paperwork that I think it's probably always going to make sense for us to bring on outside consultants that that do that on a regular basis and have the additional capacity to do all that additional paperwork. And then I believe also on our more complex projects like our water plants and wastewater treatment plants, those type of projects, you know, you you got to have different types of inspectors for the different portions of the work and experts in different fields than we generally employ for our infrastructure inspectors. So you get into a lot of electrical inspections and mechanical inspections and things like that. And you want to have a consultant on board that can bring all those different people to the to the plate or to the project for those things. So I think we'll always have the need. And, you know, we can, we're always assessing, are we at the right spot for where we can assign people and get the best bang for our buck? But, you know, again, we do a lot more than we had in the past.
Thank you for that.
I I guess to follow up with that, help me reconcile the the surface water and wastewater and and the the electrical and all that management with this project that's planting a bunch of trees, putting some hydro mulch down and some signage. I just I it still baffles me how we're going to spend a half a million on construction management.
And I think it really boils down to how many hours are we going to have people out there to inspect those things? And how many hours do we need somebody on the project weekly to do the construction management? And, you know, this is a large enough, long enough project that, you know, we don't have the capacity to assign our in-house personnel. We're very busy with all of our other projects that are going on. And, you know, it does, this project does have the the sculptures and the structural elements that go with those. So, you know, it's, 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 it's more than just a landscaping project. It's got a lot of different elements to it.
Is the 77,000 that Clark Condon wants, you know, I've looked at that, that's seems like there's a some changes that's going to be in the contract and and what it was on some of them previously, somebody was was actually looking at an alternate bid in there for different things. And I think, you know, there's going to be a savings in that area. Of the 481, 540 there, I don't think all of that has been, or maybe any of it, has been expended yet out of that contract. Or has it been?
I believe you're looking at the second or third page of the third page of the agenda item. And I believe what's remaining from the original contract is going to be that fourth column that says remaining dollars. So that shows what we have remaining for construction administration on the different portions of the project.
Yeah.
And then that next question, question amendment.
Yeah.
So the bulk of that 40, of 481, all of that has been spent except for the 81 that's remaining and then the 77 that's part of this item tonight.
Okay. Looking at the 77 and what they're asking for to do that, I think, you know, that's, that's not out of the way of the total amount, you know, in construction management, I think it was anywhere from six to seven percent of the total construction contract as it is in there. So, you know, I think some of the things could have been bid as an alternate and pick up, you know, either on the landscaping to be a different part of it. But it wasn't. So, you know, those things might have to be changed to go back out. But there's cost savings in that.
Yeah, look, we discussed this at length, and that was the name of the game this whole time was we were going to upfront, and we hope that we're going to make that off in terms of a lower bid. So, I mean, that was the bet that was made. That wasn't that that I was willing to take. But that's the direction that the council went on. So, again, I don't support the bet, but I that's, that's what was cited.
Any comment or question from council at this point?
Now, I think we've started the path several votes ago. So let's just continue the path and get this, let's get this along so we can get to a bid that we feel comfortable with and get this this work done.
Okay. Let's put, let's put Crystal to work here. Motion second on the floor.
Member Perez. Member Owens. Member Orlando.
No.
Member Carbone.
No.
Member Little. Member Hernandez.
Aye.
The motion carries four to three to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one seven zero.
Loud information in the record. Let's move into our agenda to item number nine, which is buyer council issues for council consideration and discussion. There are none tonight other than what's on the agenda. Moving to item number 10. Executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 for consultation with the city attorney regarding government regulations affecting adjudicated records. And item number 551.087 for deliberations regarding economic development negotiations associated with an offer of financial or of assistance to a business project. So at this time, we will move into executive session. So at this time, we will move into executive session.
Second discussion. The new bid is continued. Item 12, House of Member Perez, would you present that for our consideration?
I'll defer to Darren to make the motion.
Okay, yes, council member. Based on the exact session, I'd recommend a motion authorizing the Parallel Land Economic Development Corporation to enter into a loan agreement with the prospect number 1704.
So moved.
On the second word discussion.
I don't think there's any report just to vote there. I don't think there's any need for a report just to vote.
Okay.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Lawrence?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to authorize CEBC to enter into a loan agreement with prospect 1704.
Looks like moving into item number 12 of the business, there is none tonight. I think this packet. Item 13 allows me to adjourn this meeting, which I shall do at 9:50. Thank you guys for a good job.
Good night. Thank you everyone.
Thank you for the superb job and thank you very much. Darren, thank you so much. Appreciate your help on that.